Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, June 27, 2023. If we could please have a roll call.
Chair Chalmers.
Present.
Commissioner Wagstaff.
Present.
And Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
And Commissioner Williamson and Commissioner Swisher are absent tonight. So you have a quorum.
And do we have anyone on Zoom? I can't really see.
No, there's no one out in the audience right now.
Okay. So do we have any public comments on matters not on the agenda?
Oh, there's no phone in caller.
We'll just open that up to Zoom and to anyone here in the audience tonight, but I think you're both here for the 55 Poly, right?
Yeah.
Okay, pairing done, we'll move on. Can we please have the planning directors' report?
Thank you. The city council's been considering rent control and other rental protections at multiple meetings over the last several months. And so I just wanted to report that at their last meeting, they did introduce an ordinance that would extend additional protections to renters in the form of more reasons or limiting reasons why they can be evicted and also some protections to give them funding and like additional rent when if they are evicted. And I haven't been following all the details very closely, but I just wanted to make you aware that they did introduce something at the last meeting. And they considered rent control, but they couldn't, there wasn't enough votes to introduce an ordinance for rent control, but they did continue the item for further discussion. And in case you aren't aware, the city council member Kevin Haroff has resigned from the city council because he's moving to Novato. So that was his last meeting as well, but that's all I have to report. They are, they had a special meeting on Friday to talk about that, but I don't know what the conclusion was. I, I know there's, they're putting something on the ballot. So I'm not sure if there's some, if anyone gets appointed in the meantime or not. I couldn't tell you. Oh yeah, he just got elected the last night. He just, he was just elected. He's, he was on the planning commission first and then served on the city council for some time now.
Uh, thank you. We have one.
I guess I do want to say in the Zoom audience, it's really difficult to hear the planning commissioner. So I don't know if there's a.
You know, is that easier?
That is that correct? That fixed it. Thank you. All right. My, my presentation, okay? Everyone can see. Great, thank you. Right. So this evening I am presenting project number 2332 55 Holly Avenue. 55 Holly Avenue is located in the Madrum Canyon area on the western side of the city. The lot is a 12,000 square foot corner lot at the intersection of Bond and Holly Avenue. It is developed with a 4,401 square foot, two-story home with an attached garage. The existing home is non-conforming as it exceeds the allowable FAR by 14%. Due to the topography on this parcel, the FAR allowed is 22%. As you all know, that's quite common in this neighborhood to see homes that exceed the FAR because of the slopes. The proposed project is looking to construct a 47 square foot addition to the existing second story at the easterly elevation, which faces Bond Street. It will be an infill addition, so it'll go between this bump out here where there's a water closet and this lofted area here. And that's what I've put in this blue circle. So as I stated, that's a 47 square foot, second story addition. It requires design review because it requires an FAR exception. The current FAR on the lot is point 36. This would bring the FAR to point 37. And again, I've highlighted the scope of work here. So this is where the infill addition would come out. They'd be continuing that easterly wall plane between the water, existing water closet and lofted area to create 47 square feet of new floor area. Again, here's the existing and proposed. No changes to the roof line, no changes to the overall height. Staff did conduct a FAR survey in the neighborhood and found that the FAR ranges from point 13 to point 56. So the increase, which is, as you can see here, is very minor. It's really a point 03% bringing it up to 37 is within that range. And staff finds that the design would not overbuild the lot. It's not going to extend beyond the existing footprint because it's facing out easterly towards Bond Street. There are no significant impacts to privacy. Additionally, there's existing vegetation, which would screen the area where the addition is going to go. The setback's been designed to, the addition's been designed to be set back from the eaves of the first story. There are no significant impacts to scenic views for neighboring properties, no significant impacts to the streetscape. And staff finds that the proposed addition meets the city's single-family design guidelines. So as such, staff believes that the planning commission can make the necessary findings to support the project as proposed and recommends that you approve the project after you hear from all interested parties. Please let me know if you have any questions about this project. Alex Othon, senior planner, was the project manager. He did prepare the staff report. I'm very familiar with the project and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much, Jackie. Do we have any questions for staff? So can we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you for your consideration. I'm Andrew Behrens on the home line. Makes me nervous. I said, thank you. My name's Andrew Behrens and I appreciate your consideration here tonight. As she mentioned, we're just looking to fill in this little gap. We have a fairly dysfunctional water closet up there. And this would expand that a little bit, give us some more room. We have a closet that's incredibly small and we're just looking to kind of reconfigure this. Right now, we step up into the bathroom. As we get older, it's, it's already a very vertical house, but there's two steps up into the bathroom. When we, if we're allowed to modify this, we'll be able to eliminate those steps. They were, I believe they were originally put in to create a fall, a proper fall for a shower. It's on the right side and our, our thought process here is to move that closer to the main drain, allowing for a smooth entry. So I appreciate your consideration and I took as many pictures as I possibly could to try and highlight what we were looking to do. It's very hard to, as you noticed, she showed you and it's, if you were able to see some of those pictures, it's very hard to see this specific spot from, from really anywhere except for maybe hiking on that as you go up to King Mountain Trail. So I appreciate your consideration of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sure.
My name's Eric Leighton. I'm the architect. Again, thanks for hearing this. I know it's kind of a small issue, but, but it is important to, to talk it through. You know, Alex did a great job with the staff report and really kind of hit on all the, the topics that I would speak to. The only thing that, that caught my ear when he represented, or she represented, Jackie did, was that the roof line will extend out a little bit to kind of fill that flat Spain space. So we'll just continue the roof line out, but it'll be very low roof pitch at the same roof pitch as what's already there. And honestly, I think it'll simplify, this addition will simplify the structure. There was a, an addition that was made probably in the eighties. It's sort of a 45 degree to the original structure. And this little bit fills that in on the upper story, I think quite well. I think it'll improve the overall aesthetic of the building. And to the staff reports comments, it really has very limited impact on neighboring properties, privacy, view lines, shades of shadows. So I can certainly reserve some time for questions if you have any. And, and maybe that's the best way to approach it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leighton.
Yeah.
Do we have any questions for applicants to architect?
No.
No.
No. No, thank you. Do we have anyone in the public, I guess in Zoom? That has a question or comment?
No one has their hand raised.
Great. Well, thank you. So we'll just bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Who would like to go first?
Okay, I'll, I'll go first. I wandered up there and you can see it best if you hike up King Mountain always, but it really has almost no impact. I was curious to know whether that street continues Bond Street or whether that's, that there are houses on that, are there not? Or this has nothing to do with yours, so.
Any big listening can hear. So Bond Street was, it appears that it was originally designed very similar to the road that goes up that King Mountain entrance. There was an initial gutter put in on the left-hand side, similar to when you hike King Mountain, the gutters go in first and some of the drainage. My understanding is that when the, when that whole subdivision was halted in favor of open space and public space, this was part of it. And over the last hundred years or 50 years, I guess, whenever that subdivision was going, and this house was originally constructed in 1898. It was a four-storey, four-room rooming house and has been added on to many times since then, plus a fire and stuff like that. But in any event, for a hundred years, the, the, the trees have been growing over Bond Street. Last year, or maybe 18 months ago, there was a sewer retrofit project that went up Bond Street. To, to, and I guess it was a very, very old sewer system, so they came in and replaced that sewer system. As part of that replacement, they trimmed all those trees back. And that's why there's now a road there where there used to be just a single hiking path wandering up in some high grass and trees. So that's why you can see it right now, but before it, it, it was basically overgrown.
Thanks. I appreciate that. I hike on King Mountain and I, I vaguely remember going up there at some point long ago. It's almost like a trail, but anyway.
Yeah, it was a trail and, and then part of that project, I think everybody was very supportive of trimming it back and creating some, some open space there for fire and whatnot.
You're talking about the road that runs along the side of the right side of the house?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's essentially, I, I think it's called a paper street now, right? Yeah. I think so.
I think, I think that's right. Yeah. But that's the one where there's a table in it, right?
Yes. There's a table there.
What is that table for?
We have neighborhood socials and stuff. The Bond Street, what, what do we call it? It's the fire protection. So we're, we're, we have, we usually have socials and we, we gather in that open space. So we, we used to gather over around the corner underneath the redwoods there, but we'd have to get a permit for that. And so now we're using that there and we just keep that table there. Kind of breaks it up.
Okay, I saw that today.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
You stopped by today, right? You met my wife.
I met your wife. Yeah. And then she actually, I couldn't see the area where we were talking about because it's, it's impossible to see from the street. But she invited me up the stairs. So I went quickly. I had my children in the car, so I, yeah, so I couldn't really leave it. No, but thank you to her for letting, for giving me access. So I appreciate it. Do you have anything else, Brock? Leah?
Yeah, I, I think roughly, I think the same things as Brock. It's screened, it's filling in a gap in the existing house. And it's a pretty minor addition overall. So I think it fits with the neighborhood and I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, and I'm in agreement with my fellow commissioners. I can easily make the findings with design review and FAR exception. So I think we can make this quick and go straight for a vote. If someone would like to make a motion.
Okay. I gotta get my agenda out. All right, I move to approve PLN 23-0032 at 55 Holly Avenue.
Nice second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
And Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously with two members up.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we're moving on to the second item on our agenda, which is a review of the draft ordinance to make text amendments to our zoning code. And I guess we need to make a recommendation to the city council. So at least could you, could we have the, can we have a staff report on this or?
Yeah, so this is an amendment or a proposed ordinance that would amend various sections of the city's zoning regulations in response to state laws and also the letter that the city received from HCD for the first draft of our housing element. And I provided you each with copies of that letter tonight, just so you could see, I highlighted the, some of the provisions that, where they bring up issues. And then I've included copies of that letter in the back and it's also posted online if anyone wants to see it under the housing element site for the planning department.
Sorry, I, can you show me where in the package?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not in the package. I just put it on your dais tonight.
Oh.
So it's probably under your materials.
Yeah, here it is.
Just so you could see it. So I could start with that since you have it in front of you.
So I don't think we've had a chance to.
You haven't. And I just thought it would actually be informational in case you were interested in where these, some of these requirements came from. And I've highlighted in yellow the paragraphs, which don't, they start on page four. And it's not, it's not necessarily for you to read it, but just to indicate that they did, they mentioned that there's new emergency shelter laws and the city would need to bring our codes up into compliance with the new requirements. They did mention that permanent supportive housing, supportive housing is a use by right in all zones where multifamily and mixed uses are permitted, which is what the current code says, but our code is not that specific. So one of the modifications that we're recommending is to actually call out supportive housing in the various zoning districts where it's allowed. And then on page six, they brought up some concerns regarding constraints on housing for persons with disabilities and they make, or they asked us to analyze our reasonable accommodation ordinance. And in looking at our reasonable accommodation ordinance, there are a couple of discretionary provisions that would be difficult to make findings for or make it difficult to approve reasonable accommodation for someone with disabilities. So we're recommending deletion of those standards. And then it also, all of the letters that I've seen from HCD have had a similar comment regarding group homes for seven or more persons and wanting additional analysis of how that might restrict disabled people from moving into residential communities by having a special limit on this, based on the size or having special regulations or conditional use permit requirements. And so in response to that comment, we've looked at our zoning code and the provisions for group homes and for licensed group homes and are recommending allowing the group homes of any size in the residential districts. But the homes would be limited by the standard zoning regulations that are applicable to everyone. So it, a home would be limited to the size of the home that anyone could have. And so there's only so many people that one would be able to squeeze into a regular, single-family home. So I think that itself provides a limit. Any other, any other regulations that are specific to group homes could be seen as something that's discriminatory, such as additional parking requirements only for group homes. And so we can't recommend, or can't think of any other requirements that we could recommend that wouldn't be discriminatory towards group homes. And then they also suggested, or they wanted us to evaluate our definition of family. And in evaluating the definition of family, we felt that it could be a broader definition to not be a constraint for people with disabilities. And so a new definition of family is recommended. I think that's it for the House HCD comments, but I wanted to provide you with the letter in case you're just curious to see what other comments this city received on the first draft. In going over the staff report, one of the other, so we've included a change for the definition of emergency shelter in response to state law. There's a number of modifications recommended in order to comply with a state law that says that the city must allow small and large family daycare homes in residential zoning districts by right. And again, limit, the city can impose regulations, but they can't be different than those for single-family homes. So any home that was used as a smaller family, smaller or large family daycare still has to meet the size and the setback requirements like, like other uses. In response to another state law, we've added some text regarding employee housing for six or fewer employees to be allowed in single-family zoning districts. That again is a requirement of state law. And then another state law requires us to allow mobile home parks in all districts that are zoned for residential land use. Both of those provisions, as well as the group home provisions, could be a concern to certain communities, but since our median home price is $2.4 million, it's just somewhat unlikely that people will buy $2.4 million homes and use them for mobile home parks and group homes, although it's entirely possible, especially group homes and residential care or treatment facilities, like for people who are recovering from alcoholism, sober living houses. Sometimes those are very profitable businesses. So it's always possible that one may, may locate to in the city of Larkspur, but it, the extremely high housing cost, you make it less desirable to locate a house like that here. And then we are also recommending a few modifications that we didn't catch with the accessory dwelling unit chapter in order to reference the new combined ADU and JDU regulations. There are still some references to the old JDU chapter. So there is a number of provisions that we're recommending modifications to, and I understand that some of you have comments. There's no rush for this ordinance. So if there's something that we can't take care of tonight or that you have additional questions about that I could return with more information, that would be fine. We're just trying to knock out some of the low-hanging fruit in terms of ordinance modifications as we work on the housing element and other larger projects so that there's fewer projects to do after the housing element is adopted. So I don't have anything more to add, but I'm happy to answer questions that you might have about this or take any, take any comments and then return at a future meeting. I guess, but in conclusion, that we would be recommending introduction of the ordinance so that it could go to the city council. And you could make, you can make modifications or recommend modifications to the city council.
I mean, I do have some questions, more sort of clarification, just so I understand the changes, but I think, again, I'm just still wondering whether it would be worth sort of emailing you those questions and emailing back or something. I, I'm not sure spending time in the meeting is the right answer, but maybe Brock had a very specific question, I think. Do you want to start with yours and then?
Yeah, I have a couple. So what, what is the maximum number of unrelated people defined as family? Is there a maximum?
There wouldn't be a maximum.
So I'm, isn't it seven or am I?
So there are some regulations related to licensed group homes that, so more, homes serving more than six residents can be subject to conditional use or other discretionary approvals. And so as a result of that law provision, a lot of communities have made the six, six or fewer, or seven or more as a distinction for group homes. But this, the state is telling us that there's really, for group homes, there's not really a reason to regulate them differently. And, and in looking at our regulations, as I mentioned, the, the size of a house limits how many people can live there. Just there's only so many. I mean, we know that there's a lot of people that could be crammed into a home, but we can't any, any additional restrictions might, or could be discriminatory against disabled families living together.
Yeah, I think, I think my concern is that in, in a time when you're having people parking, you know, RVs along the street for half a mile or something, what defines family and whether there's a number for that? You can, you know, if you found a house, you could fit 10 people in there and it, maybe that's okay. I just, I'm just curious to see where it's going with, with that and.
That's the intent of modifying the regulations to not have a limitation is to allow people that are living as one, one family unit using one kitchen to be considered one home without the city sort of looking into their business.
And, and then the other thing is it, so group homes would be allowed in R1 under this, because aren't they originally in R3 and AP?
Group homes were allowed, but only for six or fewer in R1, I believe, is the current regulation. And then on, and there's two districts that allow the large group homes. So anyone, any group home that were larger than seven could only locate in two areas of town. One is the professional area.
Would still be the case with this?
No, now the larger group homes could locate anywhere where residential uses would be allowed.
That's what I was.
And I, and looking at it realistically, there are no homes in the districts where they're allowed. I guess there's some multifamily units, but in, in reality, there would be no homes for them to locate to unless, I guess someone could come in and try to build a single-family home, but I think those districts don't even allow that. So the, the rules themselves were, are discriminating because they can't actually locate in those districts.
But if I'm not mistaken, that's, that's not up to us, right? I mean, that's something that the state has strongly encouraged that we do, right?
The state is, or we're required to provide opportunities for housing. And so the state is asking us to look at our ordinances and make sure that there are opportunities for large group homes as one of the, one of the forms of housing.
Do you have a second question?
Well, I, I guess for me in, on page three, under section seven, group home, a family dwelling unit, unlicensed or licensed. So if it does, if it can be unlicensed, why not just say a family dwelling unit supervised by any federal? So I, I couldn't tell from this whether it's supervised or not, I guess, is what I was getting at. And maybe I was just reading it wrong, but.
So it could be unsupervised or supervised. So there's no, if there's, the licensed homes would have to meet a lot of different regulations from the state, but just a regular group home could have no supervision. There, there could just be a number of adults just living together.
Where is the definition of group home that the state wants us to comply with?
That would make it much easier if they had such a definition.
Yeah.
Because they have, this is our definition of group home handicap, which we're making changes to, to comply with what the state wants us to. But I'm just wondering, they've given us, or is there something?
They don't, they don't have, they have a, a technical advisory that's rather thick, but it doesn't provide that information. They do have some, they do have some, let's see here.
And I was all confused about group home. Is, is the idea of a group home, any group of individuals that live together? Or it has to be a group of individuals that? that need some kind of care?
That needs some kind of care. So let me tell you there, the definition from their handbook says group homes are housing shared by unrelated persons with disabilities that provide peer and other support for the residence's disability-related needs, and in which residents share cooking, dining and living areas and may in some group homes participate in cooking, housekeeping and other communal living activities.
But why don't we?
Yes.
Follow what this state.
Or so I think ours is actually more limited because.
It'll be twenty-four hour non-medical.
Because there's, it's just more specific. So, and I couldn't find a better definition.
Can you just read that one more time?
So there's, and they're just saying this. So I'll even start with that. Different laws use the term group home to refer to different types of housing for different populations covered by different regulatory schemes. And then they list a number of terms that refer to various types of residences in which unrelated persons share the residence. And this includes shared living residences, group homes, licensed group homes, unlicensed group homes, recovery residents or sober living homes and alcohol or other drug facilities, and also community care residential facilities. So under that list, they say group homes are housing shared by unrelated persons with disabilities that provide peer and other support for the residence's disability-related needs, and in which residents share cooking, dining and living areas and may in some group homes participate in cooking, housekeeping and other communal living activities.
I guess this falls under that. Except we, we require the twenty-four hour non-medical care and we just don't, we don't reference cooking facilities. I don't know if we need to reference cooking facilities.
I, for single family homes, right, we're, we're, that is one limitation is you having one kitchen. So it's a single family home.
Okay, okay. Um. I think I get that then, so, um. Did you have any more questions on that?
No.
No. Did you have any specific questions on, no?
Not really, no.
Um, well, I'll ask a couple of questions. If this becomes too much, then maybe I can review it, um, and present like my questions to like the, the commission, but.
Should we see if we have any public comments? Hersch, do you want to do that after?
Um, we can do, I think we can go either way. We can ask questions of staff or the only reason about I might do this first because it might, somebody has to hand up if that Mr.
Mr. Holmes is in the audience.
I mean, he could go now. I mean, it's just, it may be that I'm, I'm going to ask a question that's going to relate to what he's going to say.
That's true.
But I guess there's no harm in doing it.
I just feel like sometimes we get a different point of view than we're hearing.
I'm still going to ask my questions, I think.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
What a surprise.
Okay, do we have Mr. Holmes?
Uh, James Tomsox, I'd be happy to wait for the chair. I mean, what?
Okay. Um, no, go ahead. We've got you live now, so why don't you go ahead?
Okay, um, excuse me. Um, I, I too wondered about the definition of group home and specifically the insertion of the reference to unlicensed. Uh, do we really want, uh, uh, this, eh, eh, what is an unlicensed group home? Uh, does that differ from just a, a to- a comple- a complete, uh, n- number of unli- uh, un- unrelated people? Uh, it seems to me that the licensure requirement is some sort of an objective standard. Uh, that requires a degree of, uh, external regulation that essentially validates it as a true group home as opposed to just a, a bunch of unlic- uh, unrelated people. So I question the, uh, complete, uh, the, the insertion of unlicensed and, and the requirement for, for no supervision whatsoever. Um, the definition of family in two point two four oh, it seems overbroad. Uh, because the requirement for sharing is, is phrased as may. I would delete may because, uh, uh, that, uh, the, the sharing requirement, uh, seems to be an important element of family status. And, uh, also I noticed that, uh, the revision deletes the requirement for, uh, perma- relative permanence. So that if you don't have sharing, you don't have relative permanence, it seems to me that, eh, the definition of family is rendered meaningless because it essentially encompasses any group of, of, uh, un- unrelated, uh, persons. Um, maybe, maybe there's a reference to having peer, having to have peer support and, uh, and, uh, uh, disability, but I, I didn't really see that there, but I did see that in the state definition. Um, the requirement for having group homes of more than seven persons in, uh, multifamily and administrative, that seems to have a rational basis because an establishment of that size, uh, is really more like a quasi-commercial use uh, than a private, single-family residential use. And, um, allowing, the combination of allowing a very broadly defined group or a very broadly defined of families in all residential areas really seems to open up a potential can of worms that, uh, would not be consistent with the, uh, intent of at least some of the districts, such as the first residential district. Um, but two other points and turning to the, um, reasonable accommodation section, which is point eight two oh five oh. Um, I, I have two questions. Question, the complete removal of, um, criteria E, which is the, um, requirement that the use not impair health, safety and welfare. Um, I think that's a reasonable requirement. Uh, in most cases it wouldn't impair. I just see how it would impair health, safety and welfare, but if indeed it did, that would seem to be a reasonable concern. And a health, safety and welfare requirement is a very typical provision in many state statutes. So it seems to me that, that it's not inherently unreasonable, uh, to, to include it. And, and finally, why would we delete the provision in point eight two oh five oh, allowing the city to request additional information? Uh, that seems to be a, a reasonable, uh, requirement. And if there's no other specific reference to reasonable or to requiring additional information, I don't think, uh, it's, it's unreasonable to, to keep it in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Is there anyone else in the audience?
There is no one else with their hand raised.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so. Uh, I know we talked about, um, boarding house and lodging house being room deleted, the definitions, because it's not being used anymore. But we're also deleting rooming house. The rooming house is used in the, in, um, in our code. So with that being.
So rooming house is used, did you say, under the tax regulations?
Under, um, the occupancy tax rules.
So there's, there would be, I would have no objection if we wanted to keep rooming house in just to so if someone was looking for a definition, they could find one, uh, it would, it would not mean much for the zoning code because we, if, um, if they're not allowed or prohibited in any district, it, it just wouldn't have much of effect. So that it would be fine to leave it in there. And then if someone was looking for how to tax a rooming house, they would, they would know. Um, I guess my, or it'd be worthwhile, we could ask the city attorney whether or not it would be an issue to tax a rooming house if for some reason that then taxed, um, like a group home.
But I, I mean, to be honest, I don't, if, if they're not, if they're not allowed, then either we just remove it.
We can't amend the tax regulations that easily because they have to go to a vote, but it could be something we note for the future if it, it comes back.
So that, I, I think I'd rather just raise these as questions for the attorney.
Yeah, that's a good idea. And for this one, definitely I could ask, um, keep for the other section.
Then in, um, the emergency shelter. So I think you're just, you're just expanding the definition to include bridge housing, navigation center, and then you've included respite or recuperative, recuperative care. So where did that come from?
So this came straight from the state law that requires us to allow those other types of emergency shelters. Um, but now that you bring that up, we, we don't have those defined. So I think it might be useful if we were referring to something, but those, that terminology is just straight from the the, the new state law definition of emergency shelter.
Okay, because I didn't know what a navigation center was. And I looked it up and it looks like they refer to it as a low barrier navigation center. So it's like it's easy to get.
Um, well, some of them are like, uh, easy to, um, you don't, you don't have to make, meet a lot of requirements to get in to the center.
Right. So from my perspective, I didn't really know what these were and they're in here and so.
I could see if there's any way to reference a state law that defines them.
Right. And bridge housing, I, I figured out what that was and, and then I understand what, what, how the rest of them are all connected because they're providing help to people who would otherwise be homeless. But then it seems to include hospices and, and that was more anyone who also has a home could end up in hospice or some kind of respite care. So I wasn't sure if that was intentionally meant to being, was it, was it intentional?
Me and the res- respite or recuperative care part?
I always, I think of that as somewhere that, isn't that like a long-term facility or short-term facility you would go to after you've had hospital treatment? Or somebody who may.
It, it could have been the state's intent to include that.
I, I don't, I don't see how that falls under the definition of emergency shelter. So I just had a, that was my question. Like, how does that? That seemed to be more of a, a healthcare issue, um.
I guess because it's a shelter that's limited in occupancy. Um, because it says homeless persons or others in need of shelter.
So if a homeless person ended up in a hospice, that would suddenly fall under this definition?
I was thinking the opposite, maybe that someone who ends up in hospitus for a short period of time would be considered an emergency shelter for them.
Okay. So I, so again, I'm not, I'm not sure I fully understand this, this addition here.
I understand your, I understand your question.
And then, um, under family. Ju- just illegally, I mean, you would want to delete the definition in its entirety, just FYI, as opposed to just deleting it and replacing it. If some of them are just partially deleted, the language in some of it, this would be entirely deleted. But I actually also had a comment about may sharing living expenses really should, that are or will share living expenses. I sort of had that comment as well.
So, um, that definition there, I was trying to find a, a good definition. At one point we had spoken with the attorneys about just pairing ours down to, just some of the first sentence, just trying to keep it simple and persons that are, um, like deleting some of the languages to keep it simple. Um, but in researching definitions, there were some that had been recommended. And this is one of them. Um, so some, some of the groups supporting fair housing had recommended, including some of these other terms. Um, I don't think we could delete may because if, for example, they didn't require chores, then they wouldn't be considered a family. So, um, that might be problematic if we, unless we look at it, because it, then all of them would be a requirement.
So where is the definition of family? But I mean, where did, wh- wh- where is this coming from?
For example, like group homes, I believe, would then refer to, um, that's a good question. I was going through these same thought processes as I was trying to amend this. Um, some of them just talk about living as a single family. So single family homes or, single family homes are a place for one family. So that's, that's where it comes up the most is when you're referencing who could live in a single family home.
Because I see there's definitions for like immediate family. But this is supposed to be broader than that. So.
Right. So it's essentially defining who could live in a single family residence, in a single family neighborhood.
It's not family. It's just any group of people that are together.
Right. A group that share a home. But we could do a little more than that in terms of requiring some sort of relationship between them.
I, I think it's more as written than just a group of people that live together. Because it's, I mean, as written, it's sharing living expenses, sharing chores, eating meals together and are a close group with social, economic and psychological commitment. I mean, that to me implies some level of commitment to each other that, you know.
But it's not necessarily family. It could just be a group of students that live together. It's just, it's just a group of people that have chosen to share a house.
To share a house, to share expenses, to, you know. Yeah.
Commune living.
Yeah. So I, okay. So I guess I'm understanding that the goal is not to have a traditional sense, I guess, of family. It's now the, it's just a group of people who are sharing a home because they're living together in this home that is now what falls under family.
Right.
Make, okay, which makes sense to me.
And that, so you might consider just keeping the first sentence of our current definition. So that really the part that I think is, that we would like to delete from our current definition is the family shall be deemed to include necessary servants. That's sort of the only or change the term servants to something else.
Okay. Um, where was that? Sorry, that was.
Um, page two of attachment two.
You're talking about?
If you want to look at the, just the deleted.
Just leaving in the first sentence of the deleted section instead of.
Yeah. I mean, I think that even, I'm not sure that that third sentence about words of the court or dependent children needs to be in there, but it, it could remain. We were more concerned about the second sentence about servants.
So you want us to keep in an individual or two or more persons related by blood? Marriage, is that what you're suggesting?
Oh, just that whole first sentence, really by blood, marriage, adoption or group of, including unrelated individuals.
Bearing the same.
Or, yeah. Or even an individual or two or more persons bearing the generic character of a family unit and living together as a relatively permanent household, that would be fine too.
I think, isn't the idea though, to move away from?
Relatives.
Traditional, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Additional definition of family. It's just a group of people who live, who've chosen to.
The func- functional equivalent of, of family.
Well, I don't know. It's just, I mean, even using the word family is a little bit misleading, but it seems to me it's just a group of people who just want to share.
I mean, could you just delete as the functional, from the definition that's not deleted? Delete as a functional equivalent of a family, one or more individuals living together where the residents share, may share living expenses, chores, eat meals together.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's.
If, if that's, if that's.
That, that would be better.
Together.
Because trying to define family, I think people don't think of family as sort of communal living necessarily. Um, they could be kind of.
The one or more individuals living together who share living expenses, chores, eat meals.
Yeah, or where their residents may share living expenses.
I don't even need to say that. I'd say one or more individuals living together and sharing living expenses, chores, meals. And our.
But I thought we were, I thought we weren't supposed to put and instead of may, wasn't there?
Or just wouldn't recommend having all those things as requirements. So.
Did you put an or?
Yeah, and or.
Just to take out the may or and and just put a residents share living expenses, chores, emails together, or are a close group with social, economic and psychological commitments.
Again, I'm not sure we're gonna, because I, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole we did last time. I was trying to draw a wording tonight.
Yeah.
So again, I'm just raising this as a, was a question and comment, and maybe we can send this back to the attorney with some of the thoughts we had and.
I mean, there's just a lot of definitions of family we could choose from.
Right.
But I think now that we have a better understanding of what, what it is trying to be, maybe we, we think, we can rethink.
You could give me some direction as to what it is that you want to see, like what is it that you don't like about it that you want to change?
You know what, like, can you point to me where the state is saying that we don't like our definition of family?
They just asked us to analyze it. Let me pull the. They just asked us to analyze it. Let me pull the, um, water in one of these piles here.
That's the, this one, the Department of.
They just want us to look at it. So.
Definition of family.
The element should evaluate the definition of family for potential constraints on housing for persons with disabilities.
Okay. So when I read that, they're basically saying there's nothing wrong with our existing definition of family, except we just have to make sure it doesn't, um.
We would just need to analyze it. I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong. It just could be more broad and, and we would just like to remove the word servants is that those are the only concerns I have.
Current is an individual to more related by blood, marriage, adoption of group including unrelated individuals by the same family unit and living together. A relatively, and we should be deemed to include necessary servants.
And I think that if, if you only kept the first sentence, the other two wouldn't be necessary because they're anyone who's working at the house or people who are wards of the court would all be other unrelated people living in the household.
To be honest, there's nothing in there that seems to restrict people with disabilities.
No, I don't think so.
So maybe that, that's just standard language from from them saying, just look at your family.
Yeah, I, I believe so. I don't think there's any requirement to change it. It's just, we could change it to be more open to make it really obvious that it's for group homes with people with disabilities.
And the goal of keeping, of having servants in there originally was like housekeepers and nanny.
I would assume so.
This is the deleted definition. This, and then it is over two more persons. It's important to be disrelated by blood.
Or not. Yeah. Or not. Yeah.
So it sounds like our options are to not change anything because we just reviewed it and we deem it not to have any problems with this people with disabilities. Or if we're going to update it and bring it more into what we are deeming to be like a family home, which is anybody that's living, chosen to live together as a group. And we say that and we stop trying to reference families and we just say anybody who's just chosen to share a house together and they all contribute to the rent or the mortgage, I guess. Do you see what I mean? That's what I see it like. It's one or the other, maybe. Why are we trying to up? Does that make sense?
I don't even know why you need that in there. I mean, who's going to go check and see who contributes to rent and who doesn't?
Right. But I'm just saying, it's, yes, it's true. I mean, almost you don't need a definition. It's just any group of people have chosen to share a house together.
Yeah. How they do it is up to them.
Right.
Seems to me.
So I just see two alternatives here. You don't change it or you do change it, you bring it to what really is in line with how we look at single family homes or multi-family homes, a definition there.
I see. Yeah, I just see the, so the proposed definition sort of goes into what, what is a generic character of a family, whereas our definition doesn't define that. Um, so it just, it just defines it further where, but I don't know that that's necessary.
Yeah. I mean, like, who cares if they share chores or not, you know?
The only, the only risk is if someone tried to define, like someone on staff wanted to define the general, generic character of family on, on their own, and it was more restrictive than what you would like, but I don't know that that would come up.
So, so again, I'm going to refer this back to the, unless anyone here has a strong opinion, maybe we can just question this and refer it back to the attorney and just say, do we need to change it or should we make it more?
I, just in my, our conversations, I think they would have been fine with just taking that first sentence of our existing definition and deleting the rest.
I mean, I, I wouldn't say I have a strong opinion, but I, I mean, I, I think that getting into, I guess, defining the, the, the phrase bearing the generic character of a family unit. Uh, is, is kind of vague, right? Like what does that, what exactly? Like it's kind of up for interpretations. So, I mean, maybe
just saying living together is a relatively permanent household.
I mean, maybe, maybe that is, or, or maybe combining that with some social, economic and psychological commitments to each other.
Any group, any, of any group of related or unrelated individuals living together as a relatively permanent household.
I mean, isn't that a family, right? It's people who live together permanently. I mean, I guess maybe you get into some definitions of, of a group home or a, a boarding house or something like that where people are living together on a semi-permanent or relatively permanent basis, but we, we don't want to consider family, you know, that, that might fall under a different category.
So we're trying to define something, but again, I'm not even sure like how this is going to be used in the code. So I'm a little reluctant to force our opinion on this, not knowing what the consequences are going to be later on. That's why.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's the example that the state is looking at is if, let's say there was a group of disabled people. They want to make sure that we're not saying they can't live in a single family home together. So what, what definition?
Does that? I think our definition has a strict.
So you could recommend just keeping our existing definition. That would be fine.
Yeah, I think that's.
That may be the safest.
Yeah.
But would a group of, say, for example, disabled individuals living together have the generic, the generic character of a family unit? I mean, what, right? Like, what is that? You know?
Yeah, well, that's, that's the puzzle.
Right, exactly. Is, is, would, would we be excluding those people by saying that you have to bear that, that generic character?
Right. But what, I mean, where is this definition of family being used? Is later on, does it say? If families have to then go get some special license to do that.
No, just if someone's locating in a single family residence, what is a single family? In a single family home zoning district, what's a single family?
I mean, why does it really need to be defined at all?
I've thought about that too.
Seriously.
Again, I don't necessarily have the answer here.
I think the worry is if it's not defined that someone that someone defines it too narrowly when they're applying the rules of the city. And so the first, the proposed definition is, is very broad.
Well, and maybe it doesn't matter. It matters less now that larger group homes can be in our one, you know, in our one. So you wouldn't be excluding those people through that, you know? You, you might've been excluding group homes before, but now people can, you can put a group home and.
I guess one distinction might help of what's not a family might be, let's say the home was rented, like every room in the house was rented as an Airbnb room rental. That's not a family. So that wouldn't meet the definition of family. But either again, it wouldn't meet either definition of family.
But, but would it change anything? I mean, you know, how, how people.
I guess that would seem to me more of a hotel.
Yeah, the Airbnb thing does get a little more tricky.
Um, so I'm just going to keep moving because I, again, I don't want to like be stuck here. Um, then, um,
We'll argue anyway.
I was in page three, that was page two. Oh, so it looks like what you've done is you've taken out the separate definitions of small daycare home and large daycare home, and you just have family daycare homes.
Correct. And that is from the definition from state law. Or we're referring to the definition from state law and the state law refers to a family daycare home. So it, it would cover both.
Right. So and then you've have here, family daycare home is the use of a dwelling where the family daycare provider resides as a small or large family daycare home. But there was a nice definition in section fifteen ninety six point seven eight of the, um, Health and Safety Code, California Health and Safety Code for family daycare homes. So is the idea, is it supposed to be the same thing or is it to? And if, if so, can we just use one of, can we just use the one that's already there?
Sure. Yeah, there's nothing wrong with. I could look it up too.
Yeah. See, um, family daycare home means a facility that regularly provides care, protection, supervision for fourteen or fewer children in the provider's own home for periods of less than twenty four hours a day. While the parents or guardians are away and is either a large family daycare home or small family daycare home. So I just wondered, why not just use that?
Say we better put those other definitions back in if we're going to use them, small and large daycare home.
That's true. Well, and then it goes on to define, no, I mean, you're the irony of what you just said is it then goes on to define large family daycare home and small family daycare home, which is what, seven to fourteen and then less than, less than seven. So I was just confused about what was happening here. And whether this was maybe something different. So that, again, that was more of a question.
Yeah, it's just to allow the daycare homes where someone lives at the residence, but they have to meet the rules that are in state law for family daycare homes.
Which are the same as sort of what were there anyway, which is a large and a small. So, so again, maybe a question for the attorney is how is this different from what is already defined?
So we, or it is just more simple than that definition, but there's nothing that says we can't put in the state definition that you just read.
Okay. But is that what you were originally referring to in chapter three point six of division two? Do you know?
It's, it's to talk about those ones that are allowed by, allowed as a permitted use in residential zoning districts.
Okay. So that, that was my question there was it seemed, I was just trying to look, do some research around it. And that's what I found was this definition already. So um, and in group home, we've already talked about. To be honest, that's as far as I go. So I don't mean to make this more complicated than it, than it should be, but I, I was just trying to understand some of the some of the revisions that were made. Um, and then James Holmes raised two additional things.
He was, yeah, he brought up the provision of reasonable accommodation. Um, which if you're looking at attachment two, it's on, starts on page thirty nine. And I, he, I believe he took issue with, um, there was a provision E that was recommended for deletion that said the requested accommodation would not impose undue hardship on the health, safety or welfare of the subject property owner, occupant or adjacent property owners.
Where is that?
Uh, so it's eighteen point eight two point oh five oh E.
Oh, here it is. Yeah. H forty two. So requests for reasonable accommodation. So what do we mean by this? So reasonable accommodation for?
So again, this one we're looking at because the state said that the element lists approval findings for the reasonable accommodation process, but it should analyze these findings for potential constraints on housing for persons with disabilities. Specifically, the element must evaluate the findings related to consistency with neighborhood character and undue hardship. This on undue hardship on the health, safety or welfare of the subject property owner, occupant or adjacent property owners as potential constraints. And include a program to amend the reasonable accommodation process to address and remove the constraints. And so if, if, for example, you were requested to look at a reasonable accommodation, uh, someone was requesting a reasonable accommodation would, looking at whether or not it's an undue hard, like the accommodation requested is an undue hardship on the health, safety or welfare of, uh, the property owner or adjacent property owners would be something that would be a constraint or not.
So can you give an example of the, the accommodation like?
Those were, we approved recently, like when disabled ramps are one, like having a, a ramp in a front setback where maybe it wouldn't be allowed. That's one that might come up more frequently. One was approved recently was to allow someone to do a first story addition to their residence because they have disabilities that would make it difficult for them to live in their home if all the bedrooms are on the second floor. And so they're building a first story bedroom, even though it would exceed like the floor area because otherwise they can't build the.
So is this section oh five oh limited to just accommodations that relate to people with disabilities?
Right.
Or is it any, anyone asking for an accommodation?
No, they would have to have a disability to ask for us to modify a regulation in order to help them live in their house.
Under section oh five oh.
Right.
So somewhere in here it says they can okay, the reviewing authority should issue a decision to request. The disability. So it's the housing, which is subject to the request will be used by an individual with a disability. Okay. I see. And then it must requested accommodation is necessary to make housing available, may not impose an undue financial burden the required on the city and the requested accommodation would be consistent with the neighborhood character, but we don't want that anymore.
Well, I think that would be, it would be difficult to deny something because it was out of character with the neighborhood when someone needs it for living in their house. I think that would be, that's, I think that would be a hard finding for me to make to deny it just because it doesn't look okay with the neighborhood.
I think that's also in the states, right?
Or the letter for us to consider it. And again, another one might be like a uh, not a ramp, but let's say a, a elevator or something, or thinking of trying to think of more extreme examples of something that would that could be not very attractive in a neighborhood, um, like a, like a
Elevator, for example.
Yeah, like a lift, an exterior lift, which may not look good. No, but if that's what they need to get to their house, I don't know that we would deny it because it doesn't look good.
Yeah, I would say as officers protecting the beauty of the city of Lux, but we want to try and keep something like that in here and make it discretionary. So that we could.
But then, so you would deny something that helps someone live in their house when they're disabled.
I mean, we would want to, but it would have to be reasonable.
So, but it, it means that someone can't live in their house when they're disabled. That's the, that's the result of trying to keep community character.
It's actually hard to imagine a situation where you wouldn't allow them to do something.
That's, that's why I've recommended deletion of those two sentences. The same undue hardship is also hard to define. Obviously, health and safety is important. If someone was proposing to park where they're going to prohibit fire trucks from accessing a neighborhood or something, that would be a problem. But, but that would be the reason to deny it, not, um. And maybe there's a way to reword that sentence to just be more restrictive. So like take out the undue part and just have a specific adverse impact on health and safety, something that's more in line with the other housing laws.
Can we do that?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Are you talking about putting the words a specific?
So mirroring the other housing laws that say that we could deny something if it has a specific adverse impact on health and safety. So for example, like blocking fire or creating a, creating a hazard.
On the top here or no, the, or the adjacent.
Do we want to, I guess? Is adjacent, I, I'm not trying to like expand the amount of people that can be, uh, upset, but seems like fire. upset, but seems like fire access would affect more than just the property owner and the adjacent property owners.
We'll just not reference it, just say we'd have a specific undue hardship on health, safety, or welfare.
Without, yeah.
I guess as long as, as long as, uh, anybody in town can't uh, claim that it's a health and safety hazard to.
The check with attorney, we need a subject, like.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
And then the second, um, he, he raised two issues at the end.
There was, um, one about requesting additional information. Uh, I think that was under C, so in the eighteen-eight-two-oh-six-oh-C, um, it says we could request additional information. My concern with that sentence was just that we don't wanna keep coming back asking for more and more information. So generally, we have application requirements, and then people submit that information. Um, and if the state discourages us from then keep coming back and asking for more and more after they've met the requirement. So we could ask for information if we didn't receive the initial submittal, but we don't wanna just come up with new, new information and new reviews after that initial review.
Was that also raised by, as an issue?
And it's just something that struck me as seeming to be not a good policy in this ordinance is to allow us to keep asking for more and more information. I mean, it says consistent with fair housing laws, so I, I wouldn't object if you wanted to leave it in, it just seemed like an excessive requirement to me.
It, to, to me, it actually, it, it gives you the opportunity to respond if you have an unusual situation. I, I don't think you'll, you would have a problem most of the time doing it within thirty days anyway, but.
And you would think stuff would be reasonable. I would be kind just to reinsert it, but.
It can also be viewed as being really clear so that people know when they resubmit that we have another thirty days to review their application, which is a standard rule.
Yeah.
That could be left in.
And then, um, I was also referencing something else at the beginning about, um, unlicensed.
Oh, um, he was speaking about that, that we're removing references to, or his preference would be to have only licensed group homes because of the regulation rather than unlicensed group homes. But that's a fairly clear state law that we have to allow unlicensed group homes. That's the intent of the whole provision is to allow unlicensed group homes in single-family neighborhoods. Um, because those are, some of the homes for disabled people will, they don't necessarily need to be licensed.
Okay. Okay. Um, thank you. Do you wanna just take some of those comments back to see if there's anything different that he would suggest?
I, my thought is they're not, those aren't significant changes that I think those might be good recommendations to make to the city council, but not have it come back.
See, I didn't even know if I really made any definitive changes at the beginning part of the definition of family, like, I'm not sure. I know what's I don't know, I don't really know what the right answer is, is we could leave it, or do we, do we really, do we update it? I'm trying to see what Mill Valley does, for example, and I don't see a definition of family there.
Yeah, I guess, do you need to define family?
I know.
It's so broad
Yeah.
in, in that context.
But I think you can say it's a group of people who've chosen to live together.
I know, but.
Which, which, it's, Lisa's point is you're trying to distinguish that from somebody who's doing a boarding house with individual renters renting each room, because they're also living together and maybe sharing a kitchen. But this is a group of people who voluntarily came together, right?
But why would it make a difference?
Because boarding houses have different roles applied to them, right?
Well, yes and no, I guess, because we can't, we can't judge that so much, uh.
Well, an Airbnb house too, right, would be.
Like, short, shorter term, I guess that would be the difference, might be they're not there for, they're there for short periods of time. So let's say an Airbnb might be a weekend. So you have people that aren't living together, they're not even necessarily sharing a kitchen, they're just coming for a they're coming for a weekend and leaving.
What, what are you using that definition of family for? So if it's, if you're, if you're saying the family then has all these restrictions, then that's, you look at it one way, but if it's just single-family home, that's the only way they're using it, we all sort of know what that means kind of inherently. So, so that's the piece I didn't really know. I didn't know, like, what, how is family being used throughout the rest of the code?
As, again, like the most common uses in the single-family zoning district, you can only have a single-family home.
And what is family?
And what is a single-family home? And if without the definition, there's just the with, then they don't know how it's being applied. So does, do a single-family home mean you can't have a group of unrelated people living together?
A- and people do. They already do.
Yeah, I mean, there's plenty of people who share, yeah. So, so if that's the only definition that's being used, my interpretation would be that it's any group of people that have chosen to come together to rent or own a house.
Yeah, I think where we get tangled up is family is.
But it's not really
It's not really.
The whole definition of family.
Right.
I think you could, I think you could phrase it as one or more individuals living together where the residents are a close group with social, economic, and psychological commitments to each other, living together as a relatively permanent household. So that's taking out the, from the definition that's not, uh, scored out. Taking out the
The functional.
Functional equivalent of a family, because that's sort of like the generic character of a family unit. And then taking out the may share living expenses, chores, eat meals together. Um, because that's none of our business. But leaving in a close group with, you know, some, some sort of commitments to each other and, and phrasing it as relatively permanent.
And I guess, why does it matter exactly?
If it's relatively permanent, because that's something you do want, you do want, you've made a commitment, been in together.
Well, that would rule out Airbnbs to me.
I see.
Is.
Yeah, okay.
The reason to put that in.
I think that's a good idea. Kind of an in-run, but.
I guess.
Transient, I guess, would be the term. So I have that if you
I, I don't know, it's.
If you're in favor of that, one or more individuals living together where the residents are a close group with social, economic, and psychological commitments to each other living together as a relatively permanent household.
What did you say about?
I think that's fine.
You said in that close group?
A clo- um, where, that's from the, it's a, it's a mix of the two definitions. Are a close group with social, economic, and psychological commitments to each other and living together as a relatively permanent household.
I mean, that makes more sense than what we have, the two different definitions we have right now, so. I don't know if we need close group, but.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we, maybe we don't.
Yeah.
Where was the new definition of?
It's such in, it's in, yeah. Page two of this one.
Um, no, I was looking for the one here.
Oh, oh, oh.
There it is, yeah, there is, one or more individuals. Oh, yeah, close group was in here. Yeah, okay, that's where you got it from. Okay, I think that works. And then, what, where did we land on the navigation center bridge housing respite?
So I think that one, what, what I could do is you could recommend the ordinance, but ask us to look into whether or not there's any references to state law that defines those terms and to ensure that hospice is supposed to be included.
Yeah, and that, that was kind of a question, was it seemed like the respite recuperative care was more healthcare setting as opposed to emergency shelter setting? So was it intentional? Or is, is there some reason why that falls under emergency shelters? If it's intentional, that's one thing, but if it but it seemed, it seems a very different category of, of of homes. I mean, I think there are people in long-term living facilities. You know, who, who have nowhere else to go. I think that there isn't, there was that category, I think. And maybe that's what it's supposed to capture. People who would otherwise be on the street, who end up living in a long-term, I may get the term, I, I may have the phrase wrong. I think it's called long-term living facilities. Maybe not many K. Um, maybe that's what it's supposed to capture as emergency shelter.
Like, if they can't stay for a long term and they need to leave.
So I, I don't know, that, that was really was just questioning why that was in there.
And then, uh, you also were suggesting keeping the definition of or we're asking whether or not we should keep the definition of rooming house because it's referred to in a different section of the
Yeah, I just saw.
The municipal code.
Yeah.
And then, um, change for the reasonable accommodation ordinance, make the section E, uh, more specific to a specific adverse impact, but includes, but still keep some type of health and safety consideration. And then, um, keep section C that relates to additional information. I think that was it for recommendations. Oh, that was, um, yeah, recommending just going, using the state definition for that. I would just say, as recommended, I think I have, I think I have enough notes on them.
Thank you. Well, again, for that family daycare, it, it's more of a question. I mean, this is why I wasn't sure this was the right for.
There's just a lot of ways to define things, so. You could have a longer definition, a shorter definition, it is just so many ways to define things.
In that section fifteen thirty-six. That's not wrong, why not just, and we're trying to conform it with state code.
I think that could be the recommendation, if there's some issue with it, they would just make.
I, I, I think that's, I, I like having the same. It's frustrating when you're trying to figure out something and there's different definitions everywhere, so if you keep it consistent and you agree with it, then I, I think that's fine. Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Tolerating all my questions on the amended family.
This might be another one too, where that state law might change, so if having a broader one might, that refers to it might limit it, so if they go to fifteen next year, then we don't have to amend the whole code.
Oh. Well, then what you do there is just, you just reference section fifteen thirty-six. You don't even say what it is, you just say as defined in section fifteen thirty-six. Uh, whatever I said. Fifteen thirty, sorry, fifteen ninety-six point seven-eight of the California Health and Safety Code. But again, I'm not trying, I don't want to necessarily be the person that redrafts this, because there may be a reason this is done.
I agree, we can say that these are your suggestions and then take it. I don't think any of these are, they're not the kind of issue where it's a deal breaker, changing some community role, I think.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on that? Do we need to make a motion?
Uh, yeah, if you make a motion, that'd be great.
Does Mr. Holmes have anything further to add?
You could raise your hand if you have another comment.
I think you have a little mute sign. Maybe. He may not.
He doesn't have his hand raised.
Okay, then let's go with a motion. Move to suggest the.
Or I could, I could maybe went on and helped just walk through it. So move to recommend that the city council adopt the ordinance, but consider the following, um, provisions. One is, uh, the definition of emergency shelter eighteen-point-oh-eight-point-two-three-five. Uh, just to consider the new language to ensure that that's what was intended. Um, and to ensure, see if there's any state law definitions that define those terms. Um, for definition of family, modify it to read one or more individuals living together where the residents are a cl- are a close group with social, economic, and psychological commitments to each other and living together as a relatively permanent household. Modify the family daycare home definition to be consistent with the state law definition for family daycare home. Consider keeping the definition of rooming house if necessary, because it's referenced in another section of the municipal code. And then for reasonable accommodation. Modify section eighteen-point-eight-two-point-oh-five-oh to be, um, more specific about adverse impacts on health and safety, but, but continue to include a provision that considers adverse impacts on health, safety, and welfare. And then, under eighteen-point-eight-two-point-zero-six-zero, retain subsection C. I think that's it. Or, because if someone wanted to make that, I guess, is the motion.
I would move, um, but we're not really approving it, are we?
No, just recommending the city council, uh, uh, consider adopting it.
Okay, I make, I move that the city council consider adopting. What is this anyway? Yeah, the amendment is to zoning, uh, Larkspur zoning code per, um, discussion and as delineated.
Second.
A second.
All right, um, Commissioner Chalmers.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff.
Yes.
And Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
So the motion carries unanimously?
Thank you. You know, I forgot to mention in the prior, um, public hearing matter was a ten-day.
Oh, correct. There is a ten-day appeal period for the decision for fifty-five Holly Avenue.
Yeah, thank you.
I know people are gonna be coming out of the woodwork to. But you'd never have.
I know, but I suddenly remember we're supposed to say that. Thank you. Okay, that closes the public proportion of the planning committee thing. Um, now we're going to busy item and, um, we need to put both the minutes into June thirteen, twenty-three meeting. If we have a motion to approve, that was a pretty short meeting, so I don't anticipate any.
Yeah, uh, I'll, I'll move to approve the meetings of the planning commission meeting from June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second it.
House, do it, Commissioner Chalmers, Commissioner Wagstaff.
Yes.
And Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Um, and then do we have any planning commissioners' reports? Nope, okay. Anyone missing from the next meeting?
I will not be able to attend the next meeting.
So, there's a meeting on July eleventh and then one on July twenty-fifth. And the July eleventh, we do have one item that would like to go before the twenty-fifth, and we could add another ordinance that cleans up parking requirements, which I'll send to you for review tomorrow, Ms. Chalmers. To you for review tomorrow, Ms. Chalmers. If there's a quorum, so, um, I don't know that we've confirmed there's a quorum for the eleventh yet, but.
I can be here for the eleventh, but I don't think I can make the twenty fifth.
Okay.
Because I'm gonna be in Seattle for the week before that and I get back that night, so it would be hard.
Um, I believe Commissioner Swisher won't be able to attend the eleventh as he's, um. On call that evening, the hospital. And you're unable to attend, Krista Campbell, right?
I'm unable to attend on the eleventh, but I should be able to be here on the twenty fifth.
Okay, so we'll just wait to see if we have one more. For the eleventh.
Okay, thank you. Well, let us know what the, when does it go to the council, the, um.
That.
These recommendation.
That probably will not go until August. Um, they'll probably consider it the same night they consider the accessory dwelling unit ordinance that you saw. So if you have other suggestions, feel free to let me know.
Thank you very much. Um, we can have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Um, move that we adjourn the meeting.
I I will second that motion.
We can all see.
Yeah.
We just need you to vote, we just need you to vote because we already, right?
Yeah, right.
Proposed and seconded.